Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Lake Mills City Council, November 15, 2022. Can we please have roll call?
Ms. Kurler?
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Quinnow?
Here.
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. If everyone could please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Correction and or approval of City Council regular meeting minutes of November 1, 2022. Everybody get a chance to review those? Any questions? If you can get a motion for acceptance?
I move to accept the City Council minutes of November 1, 2022.
A second.
All right. Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Mrs. Kurler. Any further discussion? Just a hand raise, all those in favor?
Aye.
That's 5-0. Thank you, Steve. All right. Correspondence. Let's start with you, Steve, since I forgot you last meeting.
No problem. I just had received two email contacts. One was on the Sandy Beach survey that Misty had forwarded, and then the strategic plan for the Rock Lake Activity Center.
Okay. Ms. Kurler?
Those are the same correspondence that I received this last period.
All right. And I'll just pile on. I had Sandy Beach upon Sandy Beach upon Sandy Beach, actually, but I also did have the Arlac. Mrs. Bishop?
Yes, I had, I'm trying to look at my emails, too, two correspondence about Sandy Beach, and three or four different correspondence about Arlac, and the need generally for multi-age-use community center and facilities, and also a business plan related to Arlac.
Ms. Quinnow?
Yes, I also had the Rock Lake Activity Center and the additional one about Sandy Beach with regard to the survey. I also had some correspondence regarding leaf pickup and the entryway for Brookstone, which has gotten a lot better since they have the construction there. And thank you to the city for putting out a notice that there will be construction for repaving the part of the street, so all of the residents of Brookstone were aware.
All right. Thank you. Moving on, move into the public comment section. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made on items -- the public may also -- the public comment may also be made at this time when items are not on the agenda if you've registered the city clerk before the meeting's been called to order. The state's open meeting laws discourage action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when starting your comments and filling and fill out the signage sheet provided. So the floor is open for public comment.
Hi there. Raina Severson, Executive Director, Legendary Lake Mills. Are you ready for me?
Thank you, yes.
All right. So thank you so much for having me here and having, you know, adding us to the agenda tonight. So I just want to give a little kind of brief history as well as an update as to what's going on with the Legendary Lane alleyway makeover as it pertains to the amending chapter, I believe, of the streets and sidewalks. So basically what happened here is at the start of the year, WEDC posted a $5,000, 48-hour grant makeover to transform a public space in a Main Street district in Wisconsin. Immediately after seeing this posting, our design committee saw this opportunity and thought that the alley between, I believe it's 201 and 203 North Main Street, the bumper-to-bumper and soon-to-be-renovated Tyranina Pharmacy would be a perfect candidate for this makeover. First, because as Tyranina is using the, what used to be a parking lot now is a beer garden, the alleyway is going to be the only pedestrian walkway between the public parking and Main Street in that block. And then, secondly, because Tyranina is renovating, it was going to be a shovel-ready project and something that we could potentially get done pretty easily, as they were already going to be pouring some new concrete and doing a lot of work to that building. So, like I said, we applied for the grant and we received it. And what came with us receiving that grant was Legendary Lake Mills matching funds, as well as some consulting from Altogether Studio and a partnership with WEDC and kind of strategizing with the city as what was feasible for this alleyway makeover. With that also came, WEDC wanted as much community involvement and public relations as possible as this was their first time giving this grant out. We were kind of the guinea pigs and they wanted a lot of PR for this grant. So we immediately started working with a consulting firm, our program, WEDC, and creating surveys to send out to our community. We utilized our social media press releases and information in our Love Lake Mills newsletter that goes to everybody in the 53551 ZIP code to publicize these surveys. And the results of the surveys led us to kind of a general plan. It was pretty clear that people wanted stamped concrete, string lighting, art installation in the form of mural planters, and of course the name Legendary Lane. So that was the idea. And kind of what was supposed to be a 48-hour quick and easy makeover has come with a lot of setbacks, but we are still very enthusiastic about the project and looking forward to moving it forward. What our largest setback has been, as you probably know, is with pouring concrete. As you are aware, the stairs that are on the bumper-to-bumper building are encroaching on city property and we can't pour until those posts are down, you know, and obviously it's too late now this year with the snow falling, I'm assuming. But when the new owner of that building had submitted a permit, we were really excited that maybe those stairs would come down and we were able to get those L brackets up so the posts were removed, you know, enabling us to pour the concrete. It hasn't happened yet, as that project was deemed more complicated and much more expensive than he had anticipated, you know. But with all these setbacks, we're still really looking forward to when things warm up, for us to be able to move forward, figure out a way to get this concrete poured, definitely get the planters up that we already ordered, as well as, we are not doing stamped concrete in the way that we thought we would, but we have a stencil that marks Legendary Lane, and we're looking forward to having some pedestrian signage so people know where to go from Main Street. We're really just looking forward to hoping that this can be completed in the spring or early summer. Do you have any questions? No, nothing at all? Nothing?
All good.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. I really do appreciate you getting this on the agenda tonight, and we really look forward. We really do see a huge benefit in how this will just make downtown more charming and also lead to more traffic from that parking lot to our Main Street. It's going to be really beneficial, so we're excited.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thanks. Any other public comment tonight? Anybody online? See, there's a lot of people online tonight.
Mostly staff, it looks like.
One more chance? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to the City Manager's Report. Mr. Daley?
My written report is included in your packet. If you have any questions on it, I'm happy to answer them. As Ms. Quinnow referenced, the private contractors will be patching at the intersection of Brookstone Drive and Crestview Lane beginning at noon tomorrow, and that's anticipated to go, the closure is anticipated to go through 5:00 Thursday, November 17. We have required through the right-of-way permit for the applicant to post detour signage, as well as knock on doors of residents in the immediate area to hopefully get the word out as far as we can, as well as posting it on the website and social media. So hopefully there are few surprises for residents in the area. But if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Floor's open. Any questions? All right. That report must have been just on cue there, everybody. It's pretty accepting of it, so, great. Thank you. All right. Next is Councilmember Board reports and acceptance of minutes from the Police and Fire Commission of August 25, 2022, and Public Works Board of October 11, 2022. Any comment from council members on their committees? All right. Any questions on the minutes? All right. Seeing none, we'll accept that into our record. We'll accept these minutes into our record. Now we're moving on to council business. First is the discussion decision on Sandy Beach survey distribution. There is a motion out there. Let's take care of that business first. Misty, can you read motion 22-11-2-1?
City Council motion 22-11-2-1 authorizing the city manager to direct UW River Falls Survey Research Center to create a second identical Sandy Beach survey to be made available to the general public.
All right. Can we get a motion?
I move to approve motion 22-11-2-1 authorizing the city manager to direct UW River Falls Survey Research Center to create a second identical Sandy Beach survey to be made available to the general public.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Quinnow, second by Ms. Kurler. City staff discussion?
The survey that was distributed to the random sample of just under 2,200 people has closed. We received 325 responses, which gets us close to a 5.5% margin of error. The survey, there has been some feedback that additional people would like to participate in the survey. UW River Falls can accommodate that. The survey would be exactly the same, but it's, the responses and data would be analyzed separately from the randomized sample that was, that was received, which would offer the City Council some ability to compare, to compare the results, to see if there was any significant differences in the responses between the random sample and the one available to the general public. We did come under the response rate of 371, so we do have some capacity left in the initial proposal that the city agreed to. Anything beyond 371 does incur an additional $2 charge. The motion that's in front of you states that once it's published on the website, we could keep it up for a period of two weeks and then take it down. That we can, we can leave it up for as long as the City Council would want, but just wanted to throw out a range out there to have a start and end date for it. So depending on how the City Council would like to proceed, you can contact our representative with UW River Falls tomorrow, get that identical survey created, and have it available relatively quickly.
And how quickly do we expect to get those responses back from the, from that first survey?
They're analyzing it yet this week. It closed last week Friday, so they're taking this week to analyze it. I will reach out to them and ask for a date certain that they'll have it to us by, but I would certainly imagine by, that by the next council meeting, we would have the analysis of that original survey.
All right. Is there any, any questions? Yes.
Should we have the window of which residents who are going to do this particular survey, of the window of opportunity to be, like, only a week so that it provides UW River Falls the opportunity to analyze that data, as well as the other data, so we can have that data all at the same time? Because I, unfortunately, we're coming up to the holiday week, so that's going to impede some people's ability, possibly, to do the survey. But I think it's beneficial if we're going to provide this opportunity, that we have the opportunity to see the data as compared.
Yes, we certainly can. We couldn't have it open for as long or as short as the City Council would like.
Go ahead.
I just have a question about the overall cost. So for reference, for the comprehensive plan survey, there were 718 responses to that. If we get anywhere close to that, we're looking at probably another $1,000 of expense. Do we want to put any cap on the expense in this motion as to how much more we're willing to spend out of the contingency?
I like that idea.
I like that idea, but I would not want somebody who heard that we had the survey open again, go to our website and then find out, oh, sorry, it's closed, you know, before, so, before they expected it to. So I would rather maybe do Ms. Quinnow's idea of kind of a date certain that's relatively short, and then that way we would be able to have it open, open for people that want to, but, you know, maybe control the numbers, I guess, if you would say. I don't like the idea of controlling the numbers per se, because if people want to come, and I would like that to be open, but I think the cost is an important factor, too.
Right. So I hear, too, that we can do both, a timeline for the survey responses to come in, and then of those, a cap on the amount of responses we want UW to consider, and they can take a random sampling from the additional survey responses submitted, so that you're not prioritizing, like, you're the first 200 that came in, and then shortchanging the people who answered later. I just don't want to end up spending, let's say, you know, 2,000 people respond. Well, that's $4,000. I don't want to leave this limitless. These surveys, even as we've seen with this one, are starting to become cost prohibitive if there are more that we would ever like to do. So just controlling that cost and making sure we're getting the right balance of responses being analyzed per what we're spending.
Mr. Waters?
Yes, Steve. Mr. Fields?
Yeah. Just wanted to follow up on that, too, is if we put this out just on our website, how do we ensure that maybe somebody who is part of the first selection process isn't taking again, or you have residents who are very adamant about this, taking the survey multiple times to try and, you know, get their opinion across? We're going to potentially pay for that each time.
For the first concern you mentioned, we could, we would include an explanation where we posted it, asking that if you were a participant in the, in the survey that was emailed directly to you, to please not respond again. As far as multiple survey takers, and we're simply making it available to the, to the general public, I, I'm not aware of a mechanism to, to stop that from occurring. So that, that could happen, and that would just be, have to be something to be kept in mind when analyzing the data.
Well, out of the first grouping, we only had about a 15% response rate, so I'm not sure how many people would respond. I know the emails have been pretty active. The funny part is, is on these, when I get somebody asking about the survey, I basically turn around and say, hey, please send me your suggestions for Sandy Beach, and nobody replied back on that. So it's kind of strange, but--
They probably want some anonymity, and I know that a survey can provide that versus having documentation of their response out there. That's just a thought, not necessarily the truth, but just a possible thought--
Right.
--of why they hesitate.
Yep.
I do think as the, one individual who wrote into the city contact forum said, you know, people, there are some people that just want their voice to be heard, you know, be able to give, have that opportunity. As you said, Michelle, they, you know, some may want to be anonymous rather than coming to a meeting and telling us in person and giving their name and all of that. I'm kind of inclined to go ahead with the second survey, partly because I would be, although, although I think we have to look at the results of that differently, I'd be interested in, you know, additional data, particularly from city residents who would be bearing some of the cost of this. So if there are more city residents that give us their opinion, I think that's going to be important. But I also think it's important for us to set clear expectations from our survey takers, you know, so hopefully they will understand how we might use their, their input and how we'll be differentiating the results between the, you know, statistically validated original survey and then the additional input opportunity that we gave. I think we have to look at those, you know, and weigh them differently, especially if they turn out to be different. We'll have to sort of talk about that. And I guess just one other thought to your point, Mr. Waters. I hope that we'll continue to make people aware of what are the additional opportunities that they'll have, like any time when they're interacting with a council member, and certainly we will have many future agenda items where we'll be, you know, talking with folks who submitted, who submitted proposals to us for restaurant ideas. We'll be, you know, looking at contracts and other kinds of things. So there's definitely plenty more opportunities for people to have input beside the second survey.
So the, the motion itself has a 14-day period built in. So that's already stated. If we wanted to put a priority as far as how many people, how many additional surveys we're willing to take, we would need to add that. And I would suggest if we do that, that we add a city resident priority, that the city residents get the first priority on that grouping, and then if there's available after that, it would, it would fall to the townships.
Is that information asked for in the survey?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And do they then have to prove with a address?
No.
How will we know?
You'll have to trust it.
Based on the response.
I was just wondering.
Yeah.
You had something, right?
I had two things, and it's along the lines of Ms. Kurler's point to get, we've been doing this for a year and a half, right, at least since I've been on the council. And so at some point, you just have to take the feedback you get and move on and make decisions. So to sort of culminate this process, my recommendation would be to hold a public hearing on the date that we discuss the survey results, to kind of get any final comments for people who have had time to review and look at those comments as an agenda item, or the survey results as an agenda item. And then the second thing I want to do, just to the budget, is I move to add a Section 4 to this motion that would cap the additional costs to the council at $1,000.
So you would add a Section 4?
Yes, that's my motion. And Mr. Drescher, if there's a way we need to word that, you know, obviously I'll let you help me.
Mr. Drescher, if there was going to be an amendment done of another section, would that be a second amendment after we voted on Ms. Bishop's amendment?
Yeah, like you said, Ms. Bishop's amendment has not been voted on, so she could still add to that motion while it's still open. Otherwise, if it is either approved or denied, and it is limited to Section 4 amending, adding a cap at an additional cost of $1,000, and there was a, another amendment that was contemplated that would take separate action.
So there is a, a motion to amend on the floor? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quinnow? That is pertaining to a Section 4 with a $1,000 cap. Any additional comment or discussion on that?
So $1,000, is it, am I understanding this right, that the additional cost would be $2 per additional participant, once we get over 371, and we're about 50 away from that now?
That's my understanding of the contract, yes.
Okay. So an additional $1,000 would allow 500 more people, so that seems plenty to me. And there would not be any other cost, so that $2 that UW River Falls is telling you that's for, that's just their built-in cost for deploying the second survey and then doing the analysis on a per-participant basis?
That's my understanding of it as, that was the proposal that they, was approved by the City Council. So they had the initial rate with the $2 per additional response after that 371.
So Mrs. Bishop, with that cap, do you feel that any modification in the length of time that the second survey is available would be needed, or do you feel like the cap would cover it? Or, for any of my fellow council members, do we feel like we want to look at both of those, or just use the monetary cap as a way of managing the numbers?
I don't have any issue with a change to the length of time the survey is available. I don't think that necessarily affects the cap so much as giving people more time to respond. I mean, I'm basing the 500 extra responses off of the 718 we got from the comprehensive surveys, so I, I think that's reasonable. I'm just trying to, again, control our costs and provide some kind of limit here to the money that we're spending.
In looking at the calendar, the first meeting of December is December 6. And from this point, that is, it is two weeks away. However, I'm concerned, or three weeks away, I should say, I'm concerned about the ability of UW River Falls of being able to analyze the materials in time to be ready to present that with the additional, or with the original data by that point. And I don't know if delaying it would be advantageous to us any more than we have already delayed it. So I'm, my, we're not, we haven't voted on it yet, but I was wondering if there would be a possibility of shortening it to only a week, so that it occurs, if possible, to be done before Thanksgiving, and allow that to be the time in which there's a week or so where there's a, where there's enough time to analyze the data and get it back to us, along with the original data, by the time that we have our first meeting in December. I was going to make that a separate motion after hers was voted upon.
I think that's an interesting point. Is our contractor scheduled to present the results to us the first meeting in December at this point?
They certainly can be scheduled for that first meeting. If, I guess I, it would leave it up to the City Council of what, how quickly you would like, like this information presented. We certainly-- presented. We certainly could have it on the second meeting in December as well. And then the timeline is not as rushed, and we would have plenty of time to, to bring that, the information forward to the city council. And we could also put a little blurb in the, in the newspaper, announcing that it's available to the general public as well, which would then, you know, that wouldn't run until next week, Thursday, but if it was for a two-week period, there would still be a few, some days left after that, after people received that. So it's, it's all on the city council's timeline of how quickly you want to start receiving that information, analyzing that information. But from a staff's perspective, we could certainly have that conversation at the second meeting in December.
My apologies. I thought that when you said it would be ready for the December meeting, I was assuming that it was the first December meeting.
That, yeah, it would.
It would be a little tight.
It would be, right. The, the original survey results will be ready by that time, but unless, unless there is an urgency by this body, we can push back analysis of everything until the second meeting in December to ensure there's adequate time for that, the second identical survey to be consumed by the public and then have the data analyzed and put together for a presentation.
Fair.
It, it seems like if we're going to expand the survey, we would not be able to expect that in the first meeting of December. It would have to be the second meeting of December.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering about the two weeks versus one week if we shortened it. But now looking at the situation and also thinking about staff and what their needs are, I believe it would be better for us to go ahead and, and, and push out the expected date to the second meeting of December, thus giving staff and citizens the ability to do the two weeks of time. But let that be it, after that two weeks and then stop.
I also like the idea of going to the second meeting in December gives the, gives us time to have, you know, decent length of time for additional citizens to fill out the survey, time for UW River Falls to analyze that second survey. And I hope then at that second meeting in December, we could get some recommendations from Drake on next steps. So what should we do, be doing after, you know, to keep moving forward on this phase of Sandy Beach after we view the results of the survey? I mean, I think we maybe have some thoughts about what that would be, but it would, it would be nice to kind of see that charted out. What will we be doing next to keep moving forward?
Any other comments, discussion?
Do we have a language, a sentence for section four that is kind of in mind?
What I have is, the amendment is that section four is to state that there is a cap on additional costs, and that cap is $1,000.
That meets with what I intended. Thank you.
So that is the amendment that's, that's been suggested by Mrs. Bishop. And if there's no other discussion, we would go to a vote on that? So we're voting on just the amendment at this point and not the whole motion. So this is amendment to section four, which is the $1,000 cap. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnall?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
All right. So now we're back to the motion, the complete motion, and it includes section four now. So it would be a two-week time period that we'd be looking at. And I guess we're looking at getting that report would be the second meeting in December at this time. That's not in the motion, but that would be the expectation. Any other discussion?
I guess I just have one additional thought now that we've made this amendment. It seems to me, well, we had a little bit of discussion about maybe directing the survey contractor to, you know, prioritize certain results. But if we're allowing, you know, another 500 to comment and based on the, the amount of participation with the comprehensive plan survey, I'm not sure that I necessarily feel that that's necessary to have them prioritize the results. As long as we, as long as they can tell us, here's what city residents said versus, you know, here's what other respondents said. As long as they can kind of separate that data, which I think they should be able to do, I don't know that we need to direct them to, you know, prioritize any certain respondents.
Yeah. I mean, for reference, the, the survey, the randomized sample was sent to 2,200 people directly into their email inboxes, and we received 325 responses. And the second survey will take more initiative to take the survey. It won't be sent directly to them. So I think 500 additional surveys would be a significant amount that we would, that we would receive. So I think based on that, the two-week timeframe, that I don't anticipate that we will have, have an issue running, running into that cap. And if we do, then that simply means there is a significant amount of interest. So, but they'll be able to differentiate between who answers the question at the beginning. Are you a resident of Lake, city of Lake Mills, town of Lake Mills? They'll be able to tell you of those who answered that question on question one, what was their response to question four.
So maybe I'm assuming something here that I shouldn't be, but based on the language, I would assume that it would be the first 500 people that apply would be the people that we would serve, that we would count in the survey.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. So it would be to encourage people to, to reply early, I guess.
First come, first served.
Plus maybe a little bit more because we haven't used up.
550, right?
Yeah, maybe 550, yeah.
Right. The total of 771. So there's 535.
And the surveys would be kept, and the surveys would be kept separate.
171, sorry.
Right, it would be kept separate, yeah.
And the surveys would be kept separate.
Yes.
So we would have the two different data points.
And that's their recommendation as well, is to analyze those separately.
Do we need to put a date of completion, or expected date of, of how this is going to come to fruition? Or is it safe to say that we will, it will be good to go by the 20th of December?
I think that, that it's safe to say it'll be ready by the 20th of December.
All right. Any other discussion or questions? All right. So we're looking at motion 22-11-2-1 with the added section four with $1,000 cap. Any further questions or comments? See and none. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnall?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a discussion decision on John's disposal contract amendment. That's motion 22-11-2-2. Misty, can you read the motion?
City Council motion 22-11-2-2, authorizing the city clerk to notify John's disposal that the price increase for 2023 has been reviewed and meets the requirement of the contract.
All right. Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve city council motion 22-11-2-2, approving the price increase for the John's disposal contract. Second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Mrs. Bishop. City staff comment?
Sam, would you like to give a summary of the changes?
It's been a while since I wrote that memo. I apologize. Nope, I got it. I just had to get back to the internet. As I stated in my treasurer's report, that the increase from 2022 to 2023 is .94 percent, sorry, .94 cents, a 5.82 percent increase from the year before. The increase, excuse me, the difference per month increase, it went from 1555 to 1646, the difference between John's disposal of 1710, and the city charges to the customer of 1646, is the difference is made up by the recycling grant.
All right. Any questions?
I would add that this, this contract adjustment did go in front of the public works board, and they have made a recommendation to adopt it for 2023. We've been under contract with Johns for a number of years. Prior to the most recently signed contract in 2020, they were our contractor for a long time before that. We went to RFP, they won that process and then adjusted the scope of their services. So this is the third year under that new contract. And I, I personally haven't heard any complaints about the, the service that's been provided.
Mr. Drescher?
Yep.
Sorry. Is this the first time that the increases happened since 2020?
No, it happens annually.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Go ahead.
Just to refresh our memories, this is managed under a special revenue fund, right? So the users are, users pay directly for this contract outside of the general fund.
Yes, that is correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? See and none? Let's do a roll call on motion 22-11-2-2.
Ms. Quidnall?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion pass five zero.
Thank you. Next is the discussion decision on awarding 2023 grave opening slash closing contract. Miners, how do, how do I pronounce that?
Meitner.
Meitner Land Service LLC. That's motion 22-11-2-3. Misty, can you read that? And I'll take the cue on the pronunciation from you.
City Council motion 22-11-2-2, authorizing the city clerk to notify John's disposal that the price increase for 2023 has been reviewed and meets the requirement of the contract.
Oh, I see how you avoided the name all completely there.
That was the John's item.
Misty, we're looking at motion 22-11.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had the wrong one flipped.
You're good.
City Council motion 22-11-2-3, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Meitner's Land Service.
That's the one. Thank you. All right. Can we have a motion?
I move to approve motion 22-11-2-3, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Meitner's Land Service.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnall. Staff discussion?
Director Schreiner is on remotely here. With your permission, he can give a brief description of what this contract entails and then also answer any questions you may have.
Thank you.
All right. I'm here online. Basically, this, this agreement comes up yearly as far as percentage increases that Miners proposes each year. This year, the proposed differences are basically in the form of increase in fuel costs. So that's kind of where we see a bit of the percentage increases. Miners has been providing service for 46 years for the city. He provides phenomenal service for us and is a fantastic communicator with our cemetery sexton Greg McFarland. He does provide additional services that most actual grave diggers, for the most part, do not provide to other neighboring cemeteries. He does a fantastic job actually cleaning up and doing restoration to these grave sites opposed to digging. So it's a relationship that I think is highly respected by staff members and is something we would absolutely like to continue doing for 2023. I do notice there was a, a question from Council President Greg Waters today regarding potential markups and a discrepancy between the memo and the quote, or I suppose proposal for Meitner's. And how I can describe that is, that discrepancy is actually the costs to someone who's actually getting buried or to the family of a deceased persons. That's actually the additional cost from Clausen's Funeral Home. So if we look at the first option, which is open and closing graves and restoration, Meitner's quoted $635, to whereas in the memo, it's listed $935. That $300 discrepancy is the charge that Clausen's Funeral Home charges. So what we're looking at within the memo is basically the entire cost for service to someone who's being buried or the family who's being buried. And hopefully that clears up that question on the markup that Greg had.
So the, what if it is a different funeral home than Clausen's? How does that work?
I know Greg McFarland is on the line as well, our cemetery sexton, but Clausen is basically the dedicated service or dedicated funeral home that comes into Rock Lake Cemetery that works with Greg. If I'm incorrect, perhaps he can either confirm or deny.
No, that's correct. 100%. Eric. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. You bet.
Is there other questions?
Just, Mr. McFarland, thank you for being here. Thanks for your longtime service to our community. And do you have anything to add regarding your work with Meitner's?
I don't, nothing to add. I do have to thank Eric for being actively involved in this process. It's very difficult. It's, it's not easy to understand, and it's not easy to even discuss for some people. So hopefully we're getting Cemetery 101 out there to those who really don't know what we do. And so, nope, I'm 100% on board with Eric and his comments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So I looked into this a little bit more based on our discussions we had last year. We had some lengthy discussions, and we were led to believe that the pricing adjustments we're to bring is in, in line with the marketplace. Looking at seven area cemeteries, I'm not, I'm not, six of them, one to Shinoa, I'm not sure exactly where that's at, but that was a data point that, that I pulled offline. The average cost in 2022 for an open and closing of the grave is around $709. Last year, we were charging $885. So we're about 25% above the market average. Am I looking at those numbers right, guys? Or is there, is there a different way to look at this?
No, you are. What, those numbers that you were able to come in research didn't include what we researched. What do we charge funeral homes? And to your questioner, whoever's questioner, Clausen's costs, it's pretty much every cost to every funeral home. So I think Wayne Meitner in this very specific case is lower than 650, I think it's 635, for the core cost of digging the grave and restoring and closing it. So his costs are in line with what we both have researched. I think you need to discuss with the sextons, or I need to discuss with the sextons what they charge or what charges are involved with the funeral home directors, which is good because I work with the same ones. So that's, that's the difference. That's the core cost. Like, for instance, Shawno, I think they're at 650, but they do their own duty performances. They dig and close and, and restore. And they build the individual and keep the. They dig and close and restore, and they build the individual and keep the funeral homes out of the equation. So, you know, it's a process-to-process comparison. Dollars are important, I get it. But I can assure you, the services that we get are every bit worth what Wayne Meitner charges, without a doubt.
So, thank you, Mr. McFarland. The, I guess the question maybe I have here is, these rates that I'm looking at for the open and closing of the graves, are these comparable to the Meitner quote, where the funeral homes come in and add a charge on top of these fees? Or does this include all those funeral home charges in the rates that I'm looking at?
The rates you're looking at are sum total of that whole process.
So they include the funeral homes as well?
That is affirmative. Yes, sir.
Okay.
The rates in Mr. Schreiner's memo.
Correct. I just want to, I just wanted to clarify, Mr. McFarland, is, I think the question that's being asked is, I believe you saw the spreadsheet in an email, but when Shawano is saying that the open and close fee is $650, or Waterloo is saying that it's $740, is that their all-encompassing fee is as well? As in, ours is Meitner's cost plus Clausen's cost? Or is the, are the comparables only comparable to Meitner's cost, and those numbers are not including any additional cost placed by a funeral home?
The first comment, those are not all-inclusive. Once that we've compared the funeral or the grave digging companies and cemeteries that you mentioned, those are not all-inclusive. That's just the core service of digging a hole and filling it up, basically.
So the total cost to the family paying that fee is going to be higher in many of those instances than what is shown in the in the comparable rates?
Surely. Let me use Shawno's suite. Deanna and I worked very closely on questions. There were 650 that bills directly to the family, but then Claus, or let's, their Clausen, I'll put, there'll be additional charges for a vault, vault removal. Do they want a tent? Do they, you know, the peripherals that we've, I've worked out with Clausen's to come to an average. But those work actions that you're mentioning, that's totally non-inclusive. They don't include any of those, or consider them, actually.
Okay, so, this is Ms. Bishop. Let's say I use a funeral home from Madison. How do those costs compare to Clausen?
Funeral homes in Madison are extremely higher.
Okay, so that that's enough for what I needed to make my next statement, and I don't mean to cut you off. I'm not trying to be rude. I'm just trying to get to the point here. Can we get a revised memo with the actual cost of just Meitner's instead of adding on a funeral home that seems to be selected because they're only local? Is that?
This is, if you actually look at one of the attached documents, there is specifically the Meitner quote in there as well, with just his costs separate from the memo.
So then our motion, since it doesn't have the costs written directly into it, is incorporating by reference Mr. Schreiner's memo, which then also has Clausen's fees.
I, let's, you know, not to be fair to all funeral directors, we should say for funeral directors' fees, I don't use Clausen as the weighted average. I bring them all together, just for clarification. But yes, is the answer to your question.
So do we need to approve the funeral home fees?
I would strongly recommend it. There is no normal anymore in in burials, so there are extras that I didn't anticipate as a Sexton, but I, since I didn't anticipate them, I'm not going to accept those charges. But their costs increased for cremains, caskets have gone up. I mean, there's so many price increases with funeral directors. I'm actually quite surprised they haven't reached out to me to give me a warning they'd be increasing, but, you know, Madison being highest, Clausen's, Dunlap, Peterson, Nowakka, almost dollar-for-dollar are the same.
What I'm getting at with Mr. Waters' questions in the spreadsheet here in this line of conversation is that the city has a contract with Meitner to provide a service, not Clausen and not any other funeral home. And maybe there's a disconnect in this conversation in how families are billed for the whole funeral, including, I think, the tents and some other peripherals that you mentioned from the funeral home. Is that the disconnect that I'm not getting here?
I think so. I make one bill, and that bill is, the charges, the funeral homes, when they ask the families to pay, include my open and close fees. So it was my decision, rather than make the decedent's family pay two invoices, they just simply pay the funeral home.
So, Mr. McFarland, you're passing along the fee from the funeral home in your invoice as a convenience for the bereaved family, it sounds like?
Yes.
And, but the city council doesn't have any role in setting those fees from the funeral homes, is that correct?
That is also correct, yes.
In light of that, I would make a motion to amend this motion in Section 1 to strike the phrase attached within a memo from Facilities and Grounds Director also attached here too, simply to remove any confusion because of some of the different dollar amounts that Mr. Schreiner was trying to incorporate, those overall costs, but really, we're just approving the price increase for Meitner's. So that's my proposed amendment.
I second that.
So there's a motion to strike Section 1?
No.
A phrase in Section 1?
In between the the second and the last comma in Section 1. After Meitner's Land Service LLC, that refers to the proposal provided by Meitner. Ms. Curler suggested amending to strike attached within a memo from Facilities and Grounds Director also attached here too, which is just superfluous. So I, yeah, I think that's a sound decision.
Mr. Waters, does that motion get to what you were looking at with the other costs in your research?
Yeah, I'm fine with the with the service of the Meitner service fees. That all seems reasonable. My questions come into the the markup question and how some of these markups seem very high. And and that was where my concern came in. So this amendment would would address that concern.
Yeah, I think this does a better job of showing what our actual costs are with our contractor in comparison to the costs that you found in your research. Not saying that the costs, the increases aren't high still, but it at least levels the playing field in comparing the numbers.
So if we take this action, then if the city wants to come back with these additional fees, there would have to be a different amendment, I guess.
We don't have a contract with any funeral home, so I concentrate on Meitner's contract. I think this was sound. Your decision to amend.
Okay.
Talking about.
So there was a motion to strike the attached memo out of Section 1 by Ms. Curler and a second by Mrs. Bishop. Is there any other further discussion? So this roll call that we're about to take is just for that amendment to strike? All right, any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Great, so now we're back to the motion itself. So we're basically discussing, the motion is basically surrounding just the Meitner service fees for 2023. Is there any questions related to that? Was that a fair recap?
That is, that's very fair, understandable, absolutely, and simpler, actually, easier. Thank you.
There's no further discussion? Let's go to roll call for the acceptance of motion 22-11-2-3, striking the attached memo out of Section 1. Roll call, please.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. Thanks for joining us tonight, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
My pleasure. Should you have any questions, please reach out to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is Resolution 22-57. Misty, can you read that?
Resolution 22-57, resolution stating the city council's support for the development of a range of housing options that meet the community's needs and authorizing the city manager to apply for a grant from the Heartland Housing Initiative, City of Lake Mills in Jefferson County, Wisconsin.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 22-57 stating the city council's support to develop housing options and authorizing the city manager to apply for the Heartland Housing Initiative grant.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow. Staff comment?
This grant is available through Thrive Economic Development, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. It's a private-public partnership. We became aware of the grant opportunity at Economic Development 101 that was hosted by Thrive, and it essentially is a, it's a, it's a grant that fully covers the cost to the to the community, and the goal is to assist in addressing the region's housing needs into the future. And so, in the city council strategic plan that was adopted earlier this year, the lack of affordable housing was identified as an area of improvement for the city. And so what is being proposed, I had a conversation with Councilmember Curler about what we could do in looking at our zoning code to see if there are any impediments in that code to a developer pursuing affordable housing options or housing options in general in the community. And so one of the, one of the tools that's recently been released by the League of Wisconsin Municipalities, published a user's guide to Wisconsin neighborhood affordability, and that identifies several common code issues that may stand in the way of housing, improving affordability of housing in the community. But our code has never been reviewed for identifying those common code issues or any others that may exist that are serving as a, as an impediment. They're simply not facilitating the type of housing that the city council is hoping to achieve. And so this, if we were successful in the grant, Cedar Corporation is their, their contractor that's approved through their grant program, they would work directly with us to provide a review of the zoning code and present any recommendations to this body for amendments to that code to to address any deficiencies that that may, that they may find. The grant program does require a statement of support from the governing body, that the governing body supports a range of housing options that meet the community's needs. And so the attached, the resolution that we are seeking your approval of serves as that statement of support and then authorizes me to submit the grant for for approval. If there's any questions, I'm happy to address them.
All right, the floor's open. Any questions? Yes.
Do you have a question in, Mr. Daley? It's the end of your memo. You talk about pursuing another use for the grant funds, so I have two questions based on that. Do we have a total amount of what these grant funds are? And are they actually available for other uses, and what might those be, so we can have that in consideration?
We would have to identify, there'd have to be an alternative identified. For example, other examples, I believe, that have utilized the grant is you could, you could look at a specific site and use the contractor to do a, a site-level analysis of could this site accommodate an affordable housing development, for example, something like that. The grant, based on my, my review of it, asks for what you're looking to do and what you're going to use the contractor's time for. It does not request for the community to put down an amount of grant award that we are requesting. So I believe what they're doing is, is they're looking at the, the project, working with Cedar Corp. on how much time they're going to put in, put into that, and then having the grant, the grant pay, pay them for the, for the services. So we would have, if we wanted to use it for another purpose, we'd have to identify another alternative tonight, as the grant is due on the 18th. I just wanted to be clear that this is, this is an idea that I had talked about with Councilmember Curler and one that I think would be beneficial to the city, but if the city council had a different idea to utilize the grant for, it would be, we could, we could apply for that purpose.
I was trying to look up the Thrive's website to see if they had some other examples of other things, and I'm not finding it quickly here, but one of the things I like about this idea is that we do have some funds that were set aside by a prior council that are waiting to be used for some kind of workforce housing purpose, and we haven't really generated any ideas or really come up with any plans. So this seems like a pretty straightforward opportunity that we would need to do at some point anyway to make sure that our ordinance accommodated these kind of projects. So it seems kind, it seems kind of like a no-brainer, given that we maybe, we don't have a site necessarily selected, we don't have any other projects that we're ready to get some assistance on.
I think at this point, I would agree with a more general approach from Cedar Corp. I was just trying to see, in asking my first question, is this the best use of the funds? Because we are bringing a zoning and building administrator in-house, and so if that's something we can do in-house, then refocus these funds somewhere else. But we don't have that yet. We do have these funds available, as you pointed out, Ms. Curler, and they have been sitting there with no plan, and I don't think that's a benefit to anyone at this point, to not use those funds or not come up with a plan for them.
And I want to stress that if the grant application's successful, there is no cost to the city?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I have one more question. The condition to receiving the grant is that we put forth a statement supporting diverse housing options. Are there any conditions on the back end with following through or taking up any specific recommendations made from the study? Would we be bound by anything?
No.
Okay.
All right, any further questions?
To answer Ms. Curler's about other, they have other examples on the Thrive Economic Development website. Ford Atkinson had done a housing market study. Watertown, there's a workforce housing action plan that they had on their, Jefferson Workforce Housing Action Plan, and another, other study. General studies as well, as examples of other projects that have utilized this program for, so just as a, as a point of reference.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. I got to find my place on the agenda here. We're looking at Resolution 22-57. Can we have a roll call on that resolution, please?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you. Next is Resolution 22-58, which is utility budget approval. Misty, can you read that resolution?
Resolution 22-58, resolution declaring official 2023 utilities budget.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to approve Resolution 22-58, resolution declaring official 2023 utilities budget.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mr. Fields. Staff comment?
I don't have any further comment than has been previously stated in previous council meetings. If there are any additional questions on the budget, we're happy to answer them, but I believe it's a budget that we can be proud of, that addresses several of the goals, and is certainly a step in the, in the right direction in providing compensation adjustments to the city staff at a, at a level that's been higher than in previous years, that I, certain employees would, will be grateful for.
All right, so we're focused on the utilities budget here, we will hit the general fund and the capital budget-
I apologize.
-down the road, actually, that's all right, we're good. Any questions on the utility budget?
I do have a quick question on the resolution, can you just refresh our memories on the electric utility specifically? The expenditures are shown about $100,000 over the revenues, the other two are the opposite, so how, how does that work in terms of managing any shortfalls in revenue? And correct me if I'm not reading that right, but it looks like expenditures are more than revenues for the electric utility.
You are correct. Ms. Curler, I have a feeling that the resolution is not the one that needed to be put on, so we may, I'm just trying to open my budget, so if you can bear with me just for a moment. After a change in the capital purchases, we needed to raise the borrowing to cover that, those expenditures. There was a few items that were missed earlier in the year. So I did update that, and I must have not got the correct resolution to Misty to put on the agenda, so we may have to just make the change on that. The expenditures is correct.
I didn't run the, the different utility numbers, but it looks like there's a summary at the bottom that states that the expenditures are about $300,000 less than revenues, if that carries correctly. That's for all three utilities?
Yes.
They are in separate funds, though, am I right? So that's what I was trying to understand, although as a group, they're balanced, but in their separate funds, the electric seemed to be a little short, and that's why I wanted to just understand.
Are you looking that up, Sam, to see if we can revise that?
I am, yep.
All right, fantastic.
Would we be able to table this resolution and move on to the next one, or would, or if you can do it quickly, I guess we can just hold?
I am there right now. It's, for the capital budget, it is eight, it is 875. Not having two screens is very difficult sometimes.
The revenues and expenditures are correct according to our spreadsheets.
The expenditures do balance out at the bottom with the, the numbers at the top, so the expenditures do seem to be correct.
The revenues is, for total, total funds, the revenues are higher than the expenditures for all three entities.
When, put together, you mean?
Yes.
Yes, the therefore section is correct, I checked that now.
Thank you, Dan.
So, Ms. Curler, you're, again, going back to you, to the electric utility, just concerned about the difference because it's coming from two different budgets?
No, the, the expenditures exceed the revenues-
Right, I'm sorry.
-in the electric budget line, and so that's, that means we're not gonna be able to pay for everything that's budgeted, so that's what I'm trying to understand, the-
Gotcha.
-what we can do, or if perhaps the numbers are an error.
Well, the revenue over-
Mr. Waters, I'd move for a 10-minute recess.
I'll second that.
Recession's been requested by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Steve Verbal?
Aye.
Five-oh. We are in a 10-minute recess, so we will come back at 8:26 time period. All right, I'd like to bring this meeting back into session. It's approximately 8:26, maybe 8:27, we're right in that neighborhood. All right, so we're discussing the utility budget approval, which is Resolution 22-58. So there was a question about the electric utility, I believe? Did you guys have time to look at that?
We, we have taken a look, we would like some additional time, and we are not, unlike the general fund, which we would need approved tonight in order to calculate mill rates and get it out for tax bills, this is not under that same deadline, so we would like some additional time to go back and be able to provide you with a detailed explanation of the discrepancy, and bring this forward for approval at the first meeting in December. We're confident it's a simple explanation, but I want to be able to provide you a detailed explanation for it.
All right, thank you.
So, I move to table this item until the first meeting in December?
Okay.
Is there a second?
A second.
So, motion to table, by Ms. Quidnow, a second by Ms. Curler, is there any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you, so that's been tabled. We're moving on to the third reading of Ordinance 1247A, which is the 2023 general fund budget. Misty, can you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance 1247A, 2023 general government budget and tax levy ordinance.
All right, thank you. Can we have a motion, please?
I move approval of ordinance 1247A, 2023 general government budget and tax levy ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Curler, second by Ms. Quidnow, staff, staff discussion here.
There's a summary from me included in your packet that provides some top-line information as well as specific expenditures and revenues of note that may be of interest, as well as a, the, the detailed budget provided for you as well. If there's any questions on the general fund, we're happy to answer them.
All right, the floor's open, any questions? If there's no questions, we'll move to a roll call. All right, wait a minute, on ordinance 1247A, which is the 2023 general fund budget, roll call, please.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Thank you. Next is Ordinance 1248, which is the 2023 capital budget, this is the third reading for that. Misty, can you do the third reading, please?
Ordinance 1248, 2023 capital budget.
All right, can we have a motion?
I move to adopt Ordinance 1248, 2023 capital budget.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Quidnow, second by Mrs. Bishop. Staff discussion?
The capital budget's consistent with the capital improvement plan that the city council approved earlier this year, if there's any questions, we are happy to assist.
Floor's open for questions? Yes.
I just have a question about whether any possible discrepancy in the utilities budget might be tied to this one, and so is there, if we adopt this tonight, I don't have any concerns about this budget, but if we adopt this tonight, and then there's a shift that needs to be made, is that something that can be addressed at the next meeting?
Sam, am I correct, this is the general fund capital budget, correct?
I'm sorry, what was that?
The capital budget is the, is what, is, is general, is the general fund capital budget, correct? So this was not, this is not the utility-funded capital budget?
Okay, so this only includes capital purchases that come out of the general fund, and not from the utilities, okay, correct, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Comments are welcome.
Well, I guess I have one, so, I mean, it looks like our long-term borrowing is increasing significantly, and I think we've discussed this, but just to refresh my memory, some of that is for possible Sandy Beach borrowing, is that correct, it was like over $1 million? Okay.
Sandy Beach is 1.7, and the compost is another $300,000, which is in the capital again.
Okay, thank you.
To that point, Mrs. Bishop, I think, and maybe Mr. Hermanson can clarify, the public works budget is larger, and that one kind of goes up and goes down with, you know, large equipment purchases, and so I think this is a slightly higher year next year, if I remember right from our public works discussion.
The, if you're asking about the vehicle purchases in the capital budget for the streets department?
Well, just generally, that our borrowing, Mrs. Bishop had expressed, or had noted that the borrowing is significantly up, and we were pointing to some of the reasons, and I think maybe that $800,000 more in the public works budget this year, or 2023 compared to 2022 is one of the reasons.
Not really, I don't think, actually, most of the larger vehicle purchases, if you will, if it's just vehicles, are in the utilities. As far as the capital maintenance budget, Dwayne, is there a change there?
So you're saying for general fund, that would be more likely to be streets work?
Dwayne, are you able to, can you hear me?
Oh, there he is. Well, we can't hear you, Dwayne.
We're not able to hear you, Dwayne.
You can see him.
There he is.
It's quiet.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, speak up.
All right, was my, it was my earphones. So, I'm pulling up the Public Works Board capital plan that was presented, 2023, total, including utilities, which is not in this motion, was 2.795 million, and in '24, it's projected to be 2.841. There is a larger jump in 2025 currently, that it does increase, and I'm looking for the reason for that.
In 2023, in the public works portion of the capital budget, in 2022, it was just over $1 million, and in 2023, it goes up to 1.8. Do you know what that is encompassing for 2023?
2022 to 2023.
And it's probably in documentation from one of our prior meetings, so.
That's what I'm looking through myself. What I'll try to do here is list, I'm gonna go to the street department, in '23, we're looking at College Street construction, and then Milton Street planning, the answering machine notification system, that would be public works. The dump truck haul is in public works, a portion of the mini excavator, a portion of the parks building generator, the surface street cutter, portions of the message boards, and that is the extent. I just double-check. All of the other funds in the, in the 2.8 that I mentioned are all in the utilities, which would not be in this motion. I hope that helps.
The street build went from 248 to 430, that Dwayne was discussing, College Street, So there was almost $200,000 there, street maintenance went up 50,000 from last year to this year, there was 20,000 in cameras, storm sewer went from 85,000 to 145,000, sidewalks went from 42,000 to 73,000, and there was a truck in there that went up another 40,000. And then, as Dwayne talked about, the mini excavator, the cutter, the message boards, the generator, and the answering service, plus, Dwayne, there's the tap grant is 626.
Thank you, Sam, that was the large number. It's the, it's the prepayment on the tap grant, remember that we will get the money back on the tap grant, but we have to front that money, correct, Sam?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Can I answer your question? Lisa?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I guess I was sort of feeding off of Mrs. Bishop's, you know, questioning why, you know, why the big increase in trying to, in borrowing, and trying to figure out what maybe some of those items were.
All right, so the floor's open, questions or comments? Seeing none. Let's move forward to a roll call on ordinance 1248, which is the 2023 capital budget.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
All right, thank you, so that's the budgets for tonight. Next is ordinance 1249, which is amending Article 2, fire prevention standards, this is the third reading, Misty, can you read it, please?
Ordinance 1249, amending Chapter 362, Article 2, Fire Prevention Standards, Section 362-8, General Standards.
All right, so that's the third reading, so there is a, a vote tonight on ordinance 1249, so can we have a motion, please?
I move to approve ordinance 1249, amending Chapter 362, Article 2, Fire Prevention Standards. Standards, Section 362-8, General Standards.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bishop, second by Ms. Quidnow. Staff comment.
As we've discussed before, this is at the request of the fire department and adopts NFPA 1, 2021 edition. There is a brief memo from the chief of the fire department, and I'll do my best to answer any questions that you may have at this point.
All right, the floor is open. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, you're off the hook.
How about you?
Fantastic. All right, so we are looking to approve ordinance 1249, which is the Fire Prevention Standards. Roll call, please.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Quidnow?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance 1250. This is the second reading. This is the, the motion that Ray and I talked about earlier tonight. That's amending Chapter 573 Streets and Sidewalks, Article 9 Pedestrian Mall. Misty, can you give us the second reading, please?
Ordinance 1250, amending Chapter 573 Streets and Sidewalks, Article 9 Pedestrian Malls, Section 573-39, Pedestrian Malls designated.
All right, fantastic. So that was the second reading, so no action is needed tonight, but if there is any questions for the staff, feel free to, to bring those up now.
I was just actually going to add a comment, and I'm talking with Drake and Dan, I wanted to clarify for everyone that the purpose of this ordinance is to establish this alleyway as a pedestrian mall, and in the process of doing that, we're also including the name Legendary Lane, which has been recommended by the Legendary Lake Mills Group after this community survey that they did for their improvement grant that Reyna was talking to about, talking to us about earlier. So that's the source of the name, so we're kind of plugging that in, so it's kind of, you know, just additional point of clarity for where the alleyway is that we're referring to, but it's not really the purpose of the ordinance to name the alley, if that makes sense. And I don't know if anybody's getting any questions about the project or not, but it would be outside of our scope to say what murals could be on the buildings, you know, those are private property, so that's not really within our wheelhouse to say what's going to happen on the walls there, but only within the right of way that the city owns.
And then, yeah, I think that's excellent explanation. We have traded some correspondence with regard to the use of South Main Street as an alley, renaming it with this ordinance, 573-39B. It's, we rename the Main Street Pedestrian Mall to South Main Street, and there are some other statements regarding that name in the subordinate section, 573-40. What I'd like to do with that section is actually make it easier. We have pedestrian mall defined. I think we can amend 573-40 in the future, or as an amendment of this ordinance at its final reading, to state specifically in B, that, or sorry, sorry, that one refers to just Ford Court, rather on C, the use of skateboards in the Ford Court and Main Street pedestrian malls is prohibited. I think we can just state that, strike both Ford Court and Main Street, and state that use of skateboards on pedestrian malls is prohibited. I think that's in line with the definition of pedestrian malls. Similarly, in E, no use of bicycles, et cetera, we can remove those specific names, the specific name Main Street Pedestrian Mall, and state generally in pedestrian malls. I think that makes this simpler. So what I'll do is prepare, prepare another amendment and incorporate it into this ordinance that makes those small minor changes and kind of attempts to just generally make this more applicable and more generally understood and in line with the definition that's provided. It, it has been a bit of a struggle to address the names in, in this section of the code. I specifically was concerned about, you know, contrary statements and other portions of the code, or in other areas that either Arts Alliance or other entities that have had a role in formulating and formalizing pedestrian malls in the past. So I think our goal with this ordinance, not just the section that you are contemplating amendment, amendment to in 1250, rather generally this section could be a little bit more general. I think we rely on the term pedestrian mall rather than using these proper names unless there's an exceptional circumstance with regard to a pedestrian mall as illustrated in 573-40B, where it specifically identifies that skates, strollers, wagons, and other similar non-motorized vehicles are permitted specifically in Ford Court Mall, because Ford Court Mall is substantially wider, substantially more spaced than either of these other potential pedestrian malls. Does that make sense? So what I'd like to do is add an amendment to 573-40 at the final reading of 573-39 that will strike a couple of proper names and refer more generally to pedestrian malls.
So you can clean that up for the third reading, then?
Certainly.
Fantastic.
So just kind of cleaning up the whole section while we're at it. And again, I guess kind of to this, to reinforce and to this point, that the purpose of this section is not to ma, name these alleyways, but there's usefulness in giving them a name so, you know, for a point of reference. So since the new one that in this ordinance is going to be called Legendary Lane, or is proposed to be called Legendary Lane, is on Main Street, and the existing one is on Main Street, that's across from the VFW and the steps that go down to the rear parking lot off of Lake Street, that's also on Main Street, so we thought maybe just put the word south, just, nobody's come forward wanting to name that one, but that way it distinguishes it from the one that's to the north.
Any other questions or comments? So we'll see this at our next meeting, then? Fantastic, the first meeting in December. All right, recommendations for future agendas. So we have Sandy Beach. We're going to review that survey the second meeting of December. Okay?
So for Sandy Beach, Mr. Waters, I would just renew my suggestion to also have a public hearing at that same meeting on Sandy Beach.
Sounds great. Let's do that.
With regard to a public hearing in the second meeting of December, I think that's going to be tough at, at this point in time, if you, if that was your goal, based on notice requirements. I'm not sure what notice you'd like to do there. We can't do a Class 1 based on timing right now, I don't think, but I can check with Misty and see if we can make that date.
My only goal is to wrap up the discussion with the survey and kind of have that public hearing as the capstone to that.
So can that public hearing be at a, a separate date, future date?
All I would add, all I would add to that is it's not, this isn't a statutory requirement for a public hearing, so we can, we don't have to meet the statutory guidelines of Class 1, Class 2, so if we are okay with holding the public hearing on the 20th and simply advertising it to the extent that we can, and we are, we're calling it a public hearing, we certainly can, we certainly can do that, since it's not a statutory requirement that we have notices for this, we are simply trying to solicit public feedback, so we can call it a public hearing, but we don't have to meet it.
I guess I misunderstood, because I, I thought perhaps you decided not to move that idea forward when we voted on modifying the survey resolution. I'm not keen on having a, a formal public hearing, because we've already expanded this survey to accommodate up to 500 more people commenting, and people can come to public comment, they can talk to us directly, they can talk to us at many other times, and so I'm just thinking right before the holidays, I'm not sure if that's a good use of everybody's time to do a public hearing in addition to having this survey being out.
I, I saw the motion as primarily an expenditure issue of council funds.
But we're talking about giving direction on how we're going to move forward.
Right, sure, and so, you know, like I said, people can certainly reach out to us, email, phone, carrier pigeon. My point was, this has been going on a year and a half, I wanted to have some finality to it, and I felt like offering the public hearing at the same session that we discussed the survey results, where people could talk about the results also and have like a finite, like here is the discussion, here's, if you have anything else to say, you know, you can come and tell us in public. Obviously, we'll probably still get emails, and I encourage, you know, any other communication, but that's why I would just kind of want to have that public hearing, and I recognize there's no statutory requirement to give like three weeks' notice, and I'm fine with that portion of it. I just, you know, I wanted a way to wrap up the conversation, and I thought that was a way to do it, and not spend significantly more money either.
I definitely like the idea of putting some kind of closure on it and, and having people feel like, okay, that's, you know, now we finished the public comment or public input on the decision about food service. I guess maybe a point of clarification, are we going to be making some kind of a decision that night on what the results mean? Are we going to be choosing a form of food service that night, or are we, is it just going to be a discussion item?
It's a, it's going to be a discussion item.
Discussion item only, okay.
I'm going to go ahead and, and say that it will do a public hearing, and that I, I think that it, it becomes a more formal discussion. It's very similar to, to public comment, but I think having the wording "public hearing" brings some finality, that this meeting is your opportunity to provide feedback for Sandy Beach Restaurant, and I think it would be good to move the process forward, and let's do that the second meeting of December.
And I'm, I'm sure there will be comment on the survey results themselves also, so I think that's why this is the avenue to do that.
It'll be in our notes, so people have access to that.
Documents, right.
All right, anything else for recommendations for future agendas?
Mr. Waters had asked me to review our city manager performance review policy, and we would be do, based on that policy, we would be due to do a first quarter check-in meeting with Drake at the second meeting in December, and that would be closed session.
That'll be a closed session, so we'll add that to our agenda for the second meeting of December. I was taking notes, I wasn't looking. We're all good? All right, so this meeting stands adjourned. It is now 8:52, thank you.